Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 Council Reorganization Meeting to order. Can I have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Crandall, can I have a roll call, please?
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Keenan?
Here.
Thomas LaPera?
Here.
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Thank you. Any public comment? Did anybody sign up for public comment? Thank you. With that, we'll move into the election of the 2024 council officers. And we'll start with the oath of office for Will McCoy.
Are you ready to take the oath, Mr. McCoy?
Already.
All right. So, repeat after me. I, William, I state your name.
I, William McCoy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office?
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As council member for the Second District?
Of council member of the Second District.
For the municipality of Norristown?
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Obey?
Obey.
And enforce the laws of Pennsylvania?
And enforce the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations, Mr. McCoy.
Here's the good end, right? All right. Next order of business is to open up nominations for the Office of Vice President for the 2024 Municipal Council of Norristown. Would anyone on council like to make a motion to nominate a member of council to serve as the Vice President in 2024?
I would like to make the motion to nominate Dustin Queenen, Councilman Dustin Queenen, for Vice President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
I'm here.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Next order of business is to open nominations for the Office of President for the 2024 Municipality Council of Norristown, Presiding Member. Would anyone on council like to make a motion to nominate a member of council to serve as President in 2024?
I would like to make the motion to nominate Thomas, Councilman Thomas LaPera as President.
Anyone like to second that?
Second.
Any other further, any, are there any other further nominations for President? Any further nominations for President? Any further nominations for President? All right. Call, vote.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into the oath of office. Oath of office for the Vice President, Dustin Queenen.
Are you ready to take the oath, Mr. Queen?
Yes, sir.
Repeat after me. I state your name?
Dustin Queenen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of, uh, the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown?
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office as Vice President of Council?
I will discharge the duties of Vice President of Norristown Council?
For the municipality of Norristown?
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce?
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
President LaPera, you ready to take the oath?
Yes, sir.
All right. I state your name?
I, Thomas LaPera.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown?
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office as President of Council?
I will discharge the duties of my office as President of Council?
For the municipality of Norristown?
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold and obey?
I will uphold and obey.
And enforce the laws of Pennsylvania?
And enforce the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just make a few remarks that, yeah, I'm very honored to be elected to President of this council for the third time. After our last meeting, our historic last meeting, where we hired a new police chief, we awarded a developer for the 68 acres of the state hospital grounds, we announced a partnership with the Montgomery County Commissioners with a $5 million grant to build a new community center here. We had a one great year last year, and it all came to a close. And when I was sitting there afterwards, we all had dinner together, and I was looking around, and I said, there's, this council is made up of mostly people that are in their 30s. And I think that's pretty amazing when you look around at other communities around you. It's, you don't see a whole lot of youth getting involved and wanting to make their town better. But that's not the case here in Norristown. I mean, you just look down, the board, most of them's in their 30s. Dustin looks like he's in his 30s even though he's like, yeah. And it's just a really exciting time, and I think it's going to be another exciting year for us to move this place even forward even more. So, thank you. I don't know, is it public yet or no?
Yeah, it'll be in about an hour. It is public.
Okay. Crandall Jones, who has been our manager for 10 years here in Norristown, is going to be moving on to a new role in a new township. But I just personally want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication over these past 10 years. It's been an honor to serve with you and council the past four, three as President, and I wish you well and good luck in your new role.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move into appointment, Resolution 24-01, reappointment of professional staff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, you have approved Resolution 24-01 of 2024, which is a part of the resolution for professionals and management staff of 2024. This, uh, this resolution encompasses the following appointments. The law offices Ashanka Kill Kenny to serve as municipal solicitor, Cozen O'Connor to serve as municipal labor attorney, Panoni Associate to serve as municipal engineer, Rudolph Clark LLC to serve as civil service counsel, GNC Legal to serve as environmental counsel, Long Nyquist Associates to serve as government relations, Davenport and Company to serve as financial advisor, Crandall O. Jones to serve as municipal administrator, secretary, municipal secretary, right, right to no officer, Crystal Henry to serve as assistant municipal secretary, Roseanne Santangelo to serve as clerk of council, Kathy Pfister to serve as director of finance and tax collector, Jane Masoneye to serve as director of planning and municipal development and zoning officer, Thomas O'Denovo to serve as director of public works, Thomas O'Donnell to serve as fire chief, Richard Lockhart to serve as fire marshal, Brianna Hawke to serve as recreation director, and Dr. Jacqueline Bailey to serve as chief of police.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-01?
Still moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Does that, uh, take a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Maybe it's adjourned. We will, do we have to wait till 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have a 10-minute break here if you guys want to take pictures with the new council member here, Will McCoy. You can do so in the next 10 minutes. We'll start at 6:30. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, to order. Can I have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
William McCoy?
Here.
Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Thomas LaPera?
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, we did not have an executive session tonight. Uh, Mr. Vice President, any announcements?
Any announcements, councilman?
No.
No announcements.
Madam Secretary, any public comment?
No, there's not.
Uh, we'll move right into appointments and do the oath of office for Assistant Fire Chief and Captain. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. The municipal council for you this evening is Resolution 24-02, approving the promotion of Matthew Gallagher to rank Assistant Chief and Anthony Mulchain to the rank of Captain.
Council, is there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Better face the cameras here. And please repeat after me. I, Matthew Gallagher?
I, Matthew Gallagher.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties?
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office as Assistant Fire Chief?
Of my office as Assistant Fire Chief.
For the municipality of Norristown?
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce?
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race or color?
To a person's race or color.
Sex or religious creed?
Sex or religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age or national origin?
Age or national origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
We'll now move into the oath of office for Norristown Police Chief, Dr. Jacqueline Bailey-Davis.
We have one more, Mr. President, one more.
Oh, one more.
Sorry, chief.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anthony Mulchain?
I, Anthony Mulchain.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office?
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As captain?
As captain.
For the municipality of Norristown?
For the municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce?
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race or color?
To a person's race or color.
Sex or religious creed?
Sex or religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age or national origin?
Age or national origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we can move into the oath of office for Norristown Police Chief, Dr. Jacqueline Bailey-Davis. Mr. Jones?
I don't have it. I was given it. Mr.? Mr. Chief?
Electronic. Yes. Good photo opportunities. Thank you for, uh, your patience. All right. You're ready to take the oath? Repeat after me. State your name?
I, Dr. Jacqueline Bailey-Davis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania?
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of the municipality of Norristown?
And the laws of the municipality of Norristown.
That I will discharge the duties of my office?
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
As Chief of Chief for the Norristown Municipality?
As Chief of Chief for the Norristown Municipality, yes.
Then I will? With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce?
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown?
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race?
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. With that, we'll move into Resolution 23-04. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I got my people shuffle around here. Council, Resolution 24-03 is a resolution for the municipality of Norristown for the appointment of citizens to municipal boards and committees. Uh, this resolution appoint makes the following appointments. For Municipal Stormwater Authority, Christine Fleming, which is a reappointment with a term expiring December 31st, 2029. For the Planning Commission, Kelly Monday, a reappointment with a term expiring December 31st, 2029. And for the Planning Commission, Alvinah Hamm, uh, with the term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-03?
Still moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to planning and municipal development. We have a public hearing, a request for adoption of Ordinance 23-09. Um, do I have a motion to open the pub? Or do you want to go through it first, or motion to open the public hearing? Uh, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
Still here.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Uh, public hearing is over. Ms. Maldia?
Thank you, Council President. Council, uh, for you tonight, we're requesting an adoption of Ordinance 23-09 for the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, uh, proposed budget. These ordinance were advertised on, uh, the Times Herald on December 22nd and 20, uh, of 2023. I shall go through quickly the process. I shall go through quickly the process, which we are required to, uh, on record. So, the history of it is, we developed administrative recommendations throughout the year. We sent an email memo, uh, informing council members of a public hearing. Notice of a public hearing for the annual action plan was advertised in the local paper of general circulation, that's the Times Herald, on September fifteenth and September twenty-second. The first public hearing to garner public input for projects was held on October second, twenty-twenty-three. We presented the proposed projects and the budgets at the November eighth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting and received authorization to proceed with advertising the proposed budget and a public hearing to be held on December seventh, twenty-twenty-three. And we advertised December seventh, twenty-twenty-three, a public hearing in the local paper, the Times Herald, on, in, uh, November tenth and November seventeenth. The second public hearing was held December seventh, and there was no public comment at that point. We presented the budget, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty-three oh-nine, and received authorization from council on December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. These facts and issues include the funding of projects that are to be, of course, restricted with activities that are, must be fundable and eligible according to federal regulations. I will read into the record the ordinance numbers for each section for housing projects. We recommended a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Municipal projects, six hundred and ten thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. Administration, a hundred and eighteen and six hundred and seventy-two dollars, for a total of nine hundred and nineteen, uh, thousand dollars and five. The following projects were included in this budget. The owner occupied housing program is going to be funded, for a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Housing rehab, technical support, thirty-five thousand dollars. Fair Housing Council, thirty thousand dollars. Small Business Assistance Center, forty thousand dollars. Main Street Economic Development Initiative, ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Five-year consolidated plan, thirty thousand. Section one oh-eight repayment, four hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Administration, a hundred and eighteen dollars and six hundred and seventy-two dollars, for a total of nine hundred and nineteen and, uh, five dollars. That concludes my presentation, and we're requesting council to adopt this ordinance so that we'll be able to submit the application to the federal government. As soon as Congress passes the budget, we will then be able to, uh, start allocating the money for expenditures. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Uh, meeting's closed. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash zero-nine?
Some moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance passes. Thank you. Building codes and compliance, Harb Board of December twenty-three, Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, as you are aware, Norristown Harb receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs, alterations, demolitions, and renovations for properties that are located in Norristown's historic districts. Those applications are reviewed by the Harb members to confirm that the repair, alteration, demolition, and/or renovation work is in compliance with our municipal ordinance. The Harb has reviewed the applications and have approved either as submitted or modified, as mentioned on the COA, the following properties: Five twenty-four Sweet Street, six twenty-nine West Main, six forty-one Halls, and eight oh-one West Marshall.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the Harb Board of December twenty-three?
Some moved.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
William McCoy?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.